Good afternoon, ECU. Welcome to our town hall this afternoon where we're gathered together to talk a bit about the COVID-19 campus operations, how our campus is currently carrying out some of our duties, protocol and policies. As you all know, we have been hard at work, the campus, the university has been hard at work since March 2020 to make sure that we have protocols and practices and policies in place to be able to address the different situations that present themselves. The university has remained nimble to be able to adapt and be flexible as we learn new information, as things change. And we are very thankful for everyone, our faculty, our students and our staff for understanding and accommodating those changes as we needed to make them. This afternoon, we have a panel of individuals, of experts here on our campus who are going to share some information with you and then, of course, address some questions. We'll do a quick introduction of those individuals in just a second. But just to give you a little bit of housekeeping, we will be taking questions from the audience. If you have a question, if you look up in your right-hand, top part of your right-hand screen, you will see a question mark in the chat. Please go ahead and write your comments or your chats into that box, and we have people who are monitoring those. We may not get to every question or every comment, but we'll do our best to get through as many as possible. Some questions were already submitted to the COVID-19 email address, and we will share those questions and get the answers to those questions. So let's first of all just start with some quick introductions. So we'll start with Lauren, if you would.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Lauren Thorne. I'm one of the Associate Deans and the Dean of Students' Office, and for the last year and a half have been helping with the university COVID-19 response. Happy to be here today.
Thank you, Lauren. Jeff?
Hi, I'm Jeff Dozier. Hi, I'm Jeff Dozier with Employee Relations and HR. I'm here to answer any questions Pitt may have about vaccine testing or mandates on campus or mask appliance for the department employees. Good to have you.
Thank you. And Dr. Barry?
Hi, I'm Paul Barry. I'm the Director of the Office of Prospective Health, and I'm glad to see everybody that's here.
Thank you. Leila?
Good afternoon, Leila Faranish. I'm one of the Associate Dean of Students and the Director of the Office of Student Rights and Responsibilities.
And Dr. Wright?
Hi, I'm Lenika Wright. I'm the Director of Student Health, and we are all COVID all the time over here.
Thank you all so very much. So what we're going to do then is start off with Dr. Wright. We'll provide a quick overview of some of the steps that are being taken and where we are today, and then after she finishes, we will then go to Dr. Barry. So Dr. Wright, please.
Yes, so student health has definitely been involved in this process since, again, last March. We are working with students regarding testing, regarding exposures, assisting with contact tracing, and assisting with isolation and quarantine. One of the big initiatives we've had this year is increasing our surveillance testing on campus. We have increased our surveillance testing sites to five different sites throughout the campus that have been doing saliva testing. One of the things we realized, or we were monitoring, was our numbers, knowing going into this that we would have an increase in numbers, a surge at some point. As we noticed that surge, we quickly shifted to a more mass testing model in the Student Center so that we didn't have a cap on the number of tests that we could do. We have survived that surge that we believe in, so are now moving to more of a, just back to our normal testing at our five different sites. One of the things we have done to change is that we are going to do 100% of testing of students that reside off-campus once a week. And so we will begin that next week. We have partnered with a company called Mako, and they will begin that testing next week. So we're excited about expanding our surveillance program even more to make sure that we're capturing more students.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. And very quickly, before we go to Dr. Barry, can you, do you mind naming the five sites for students to get tested?
Yes. So currently, our five sites are in Todd Dining Hall, in West End Dining Hall, in the main Student Center, room 125, in the Croatan, and at the Health Sciences Center and the Student Health Services. We hold that clinic twice a week.
Thank you. Dr. Barry?
Well, again, as I said, I work in the Office of Prospective Health, so we're not quite all COVID all the time, but we're COVID probably 90% of the time right now. The employees have been very good. I'm very impressed. We've had about 440 cases since this began. Our rate of infection is much lower than the surrounding area of Pitt County, and I'm grateful for that. I'm also happy to see the statistics from the attestation that says almost 80% of our faculty and employees are vaccinated, which is far, far better than 48% that Pitt County has right now. This is a bad disease. It's not to be underestimated. Pitt County has had 129 deaths, and fortunately, none amongst employees, at least that I'm aware of. So keep up the good work, employees, and give us a call when you got some questions.
All right, great. Thank you. So we have a question already that has come in, and the question is about vaccines, and when will vaccines be required? Dr. Wright?
So currently, we are not requiring vaccines for students. That is something that we have to take direction from the UNC system about, and I believe that the UNC system is working with the state to make that decision.
So if I remember correctly, there's the Commission, North Carolina Public Health Commission, or Commission on Public Health, that makes those calls regarding what the required immunizations will be? And so we're waiting on them to make some decisions and connect and consult with the UNC System Office before any of that happens. When it does, ECU will then be ready to follow the same protocol as we do with the other immunizations. All right, Dr. Barry, you want to talk anything, or Lauren, from related to employees?
Yeah, I'll start her off. Starting December 1st, vaccines are going to be mandated for employees that work in clinical settings. That doesn't mean everybody that works in a clinical setting or walks in the door of the clinic, but it's going to be directed at people that have face-to-face contact with patients. This has been approved by the state, and the chancellor sent out a memo on the 1st of September, kind of outlining the program and how it's going to start and when one request for exemption might be due. They'll be due on November 1st. The vaccines will be mandated starting December 1st.
Thank you very much. Okay, and Lauren or Jeff, anything you want to add?
Yeah, thank you. I would just like to add that anybody that falls under that mandate, or patient-facing mandate for clinical workers, did get an email from Employee Relations last Friday notifying them that they are part of the mandate. So if you are part of the mandate, you should have already received a notification of that.
Thank you, Jeff. Greatly appreciate that. All right, so we've got another question here related to testing. This individual is a part-time contractual employee, is finding that getting tested is impossible this semester, and that on-campus testing for faculty and staff is unavailable this year despite the COVID situation being woefully worse than what it was previously. And so the question is, where can a faculty member or a staff member get testing on campus? Let's start with Paul, Dr. Barry.
Yeah, we do have limited testing on campus. It's very limited. It's between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock on weekdays. If you call me, I can put in the order. It's not just a walk-in like it used to be. They unfortunately took the tents down behind the Family Medicine Building due to staffing shortages, and that's what's driving a lot of the problem right now. There are other places in town that are available. There are numbers to call for employees. You can call the Rapid Access Clinic. You can call the COVID hotline for ECU physicians, which is 744-3119, and they can arrange virtual visits and with any luck, get testing at the same time. So it's available, but limited, sorry.
That number again is 252-744-3119. Is that correct, Dr. Barry? Thank you.
Yes.
We have another question that's related, that wants some clarification about off-campus students and their testing. Will they be tested, whether they're vaccinated or unvaccinated? What's that protocol?
Yes, so surveillance testing currently, based on the CDC guidelines, are for individuals who are unvaccinated. So it will be unvaccinated students that live off-campus but are having face-to-face classes. They will be required to be tested weekly.
And Dr. Wright, while you're at it, would you go ahead and just repeat for others what's happening with the students who live on campus?
Yes. And so for students that live on campus that are unvaccinated, they are also being required to be tested weekly. Their weekly testing requirements began two weeks ago, and yes, so they are being tested weekly as well.
So the next question is, when will the university do a virtual pivot since we are seeing a lot of clusters? And Dr. Wright, you want to go ahead? Go ahead, Dr. Wright.
Yes, so we are closely monitoring our clusters. We're closely monitoring our cases on campus, and also monitoring classrooms, and so making decisions about how we move forward in classrooms. So there doesn't have to be a large change to virtual learning if we can micromanage the outbreaks that we're seeing.
So the goal for the university, as we've stated since the summer and stand by it today, is that the goal is that we're not going to pivot to online as a university, that we think we have enough, our protocol is in place, enough protocol and ample protocol to be able to manage any kind of surge we have. We do have a lot of quarantine and isolation spaces available. I believe right now we have about 80 or 85% availability within our on-campus quarantine and isolation space, which is College Hill Suites. So right now, we do have, we have a good number of rooms that we can use if we need to. So we're not at this point planning to do that kind of full university pivot. As Dr. Wright stated, we are doing what we're calling precision management. So if we have a classroom that has a certain number, and we can see that there's some kind of epidemiological connection, then we are having those classrooms to transition to one or two days' worth of online delivery, but it is a temporary delivery for that transition. But our goal is, and that's something else comes forth, our goal is to remain on campus for the fall semester. All right, we have yet another, excuse me, another question. Can staff be exempt? This is a question about the tests, vaccinations. Can employees be exempt, and what are the consequences for not getting? I think it's two different questions. Right? So, and Jeff, I'm going to throw it to you for now. What are the consequences if a staff member within, as Dr. Barry described, those individuals, the employees who are patient-facing, who are required to get a vaccination? What are the consequences for those individuals who do not get that vaccination?
So if the question is directly about those that are part of the mandate that failed to get an exemption by 11:01 or failed to get vaccinated by 12:01, that would be a requirement for employment to maintain continuous employment with ECU. How that looks at that time has not been decided yet, but I would go with the stance now that that is a requirement for that position if you've been deemed as mandated to get the vaccine or have failed to get an exemption to do so.
And talk a bit more about either, Jeff, if you would, and Dr. Barry can come in if needed, but Jeff, can you could talk a little bit about the exemptions? There are two types of exemptions, is that correct?
Yeah, right now, there's two main exemptions. The first one is a medical exemption, which would go to Dr. Barry in Prospective Health, and that is to show that you have a natural immunity to the virus right now. The other exemption is a religious exemption, which goes through the Office of Equity and Diversity. But keep in mind that the mandate is to be vaccinated by 12:01, but you must have the exemption completed by 11:01, and that's submitted by that point.
Thank you, Jeff. Dr. Barry, anything you want to add?
Yeah, I would just add that when we look at the exemptions, we don't do it in a vacuum. We've teamed up with Viden, and Viden has a committee that looks at exemptions, and I refer to them and talk to them about it to see what their take is on it, to make the final decision whether the exemption is granted or not.
Thank you, Dr. Barry. We have another question here. How do faculty draw the line with self-quarantining time limits? The individual is worried about students taking advantage of this self-isolation. Lauren, I see, you want to answer that?
I'll start with it and see if Dr. Wright wants to jump in. So the Dean of Students' Office has been working with students, both who are self-reporting positive cases, as well as those who are being asked to quarantine after an exposure. The challenge, of course, with quarantines is that there is usually not a strong paper trail for that. You know, it's a contact tracing call, it's, you know, whether it be from our ECU contact tracing or from Pitt County Health Department contact tracing. Many students are in environments or settings where they know that they've been exposed, and so they're quarantining themselves. And so there really is a lot of gray area with quarantining, whereas, of course, our positives, we have the paper trail of a test result, clear isolation endpoint, everything like that, and it's a lot easier for our office to be able to validate and then provide that information to the faculty members about that positive test result. So with quarantines, we are working with students individually to help them to figure out how to best manage that process. It is a challenge. It is not a perfect process, and I think that that's probably where I'm hearing a lot of frustration from our faculty members, is the ongoing quarantine, or, you know, that it seems to sort of go from quarantine to an isolation if they test positive, and so it can be a long timeframe. It can be anywhere from, you know, six to 10 days if you have a quarantine period and then add on an isolation period after that student tests positive. We are working with Faculty Senate to make the letter and the documentation that students receive from our office clearer that explains that they are not exempt from turning in assignments or, you know, missing extended class time that they are to work with the faculty members. But we also encourage faculty members to have those conversations with the students and, you know, to ask about a negative, you know, usually we don't provide a clearance letter for quarantines, and it really is more of a negative test result. If there are specific concerns about a student who is either not self-reporting or seems to be taking advantage of the policy, feel free to reach out to our office or to myself, and we'll investigate and try to provide as much clarification as possible with that student's situation.
Thank you, Lauren. Greatly appreciate that. I have another question for, not quite sure just yet who, but the question is, why doesn't the university have an indoor and outdoor mask requirement? Dr. Wright, would you like that one?
Yeah, so we don't currently have an outdoor mask requirement because that's not the current recommendation from any of our guiding bodies. And so, you know, one of the safest, one of the better places to be is to be outdoors in the open air, and so that is, that's actually the reason, is because we're going off of our governing bodies, and the current indication is indoors is, you know, is more likely to be an issue.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. And then there's a question in regards to some of the documents that the university has put out regarding mask-wearing indoors, and that when people are eating or drinking, they can have their mask off, of course. There's a question asking for clarification. Can or will the university provide a stronger statement that states masks must be worn in the hallways and in elevators regardless of whether you are carrying or drinking or not? So in essence, people want a stronger statement regarding eating and drinking and mask-wearing. Anybody want to take that? All right, okay, I'll take it. So I think the short answer is, in order to eat and drink, people need to have their mask off. Sometimes people forget, I know students typically forget, to pull the mask back up after, in between or after they finish that particular act. And so a friendly reminder for them to pull their mask up or to put their mask back on is warranted at that time. At least from the situations in which I've encountered, students have very willingly pulled their mask back up after they've finished eating and drinking, once they've been reminded. So we can take a look at the statement, at what our statements are in the various policies, and see if there's some stronger language we can include in there, but we also invite you to encourage others to make sure that they're pulling their mask back up. And when we say elevators, you're indoors, the elevators are indoors, so that still means a mask should be worn, right? I've got another question here about whether or not employees' children, employees' family members can be tested here on campus. Dr. Wright?
Yes, so employees' children may not be tested at Student Health Services or any of our clinics, just because our goal is to make sure that we serve the students in a timely manner, and they also are not eligible for our services.
All right, and questions about boosters. Will employees be able to get their booster shot when and if they're required or given, approved? Will they be able to get those on campus?
I'll take that one. Yeah, I think they will. Right now, there's a lot of conflicting information about whether boosters are necessary, but we're all expecting a statement coming out in the next five days or so that addresses boosters. And I just want to put in a plug, not only can you get a booster, hopefully, at the flu shot clinics, but you can get regular vaccines at the flu shot clinics too. The latest information is that you can get a flu shot and the COVID vaccine all at the same time.
So glad you brought that up, because that had been a question, right, regarding, can you get both at the same, on the same day? And so I've had several, actually, employees to ask that question. And we're going to be holding the TOOFER, as I call them, the TOOFER clinics, right? A COVID vaccine and a flu shot. Dr. Barry or Dr. Wright, which one want to talk about those clinics?
Sure, there's going to be four clinics. One's going to be at Ross Hall, the dental school. One will be at the East Carolina Heart Institute. Then there's going to be two flu fests, and I'm not exactly sure how that's going to work, but I'm going to turn this one over to Dr. Wright, I think, because she's behind this. But again, the flu shots and the COVID shots will be available, and yes, indeed, employees, you can get both at the same time.
Okay, yeah, so Flu Fest, we're super excited about it. It's our inaugural Flu Fest. We'll have one at the Health Science Student Center, and we'll have another one at the lawn outside the main Campus Student Center on 9/28 at Health Sciences and 10/19 on the main campus, and this will be open to everyone, to all the pirates and the pirate community. So anyone can come. They will have pediatric nurses available from 2:00 to 4:00, so people can bring their children to that and be able to get their flu shots. And again, we'll be offering COVID vaccinations there, and those should be big celebrations. There'll be food and, you know, a few giveaways. It'd be exciting.
So everybody, please get your flu shot, and those who need, who haven't been vaccinated, get your vaccination. We have put the times and locations of those flu vaccination clinics in the chat, so please go there to see those. I have another question about positive antibodies, and will a positive antibody test be acceptable in place of a vaccine? Let's start from the employee side, Dr. Barry?
Yes, it will. It's been shown that natural immunity can last several months, and you need to remember, this disease hasn't been around all that long. It's only been a couple of years. But as long as you have antibodies to the, what's called a spike protein, and it's a routine part of the testing, you will be exempt for six months, because then you need to repeat antibody test to see if the immunity has reined or not. So it is indeed a reason to get exempt.
Dr. Wright, for the students?
So for students, we are not currently requiring the vaccine, and so because we aren't currently requiring the vaccine, we aren't considering the antibodies as any reason to not test, and that's just anecdotal from our own experiences of seeing patients with positive antibodies and then also having the virus. So currently, because we aren't requiring the vaccine, we are not considering antibodies.
Thank you. I'm going to go to another question, and then I'm going to come to Jeff and Lauren to give me an overview about the employee testing. So here's the question, and it is, will ECU recommend that fully vaccinated individuals get tested for COVID-19 on a regular basis? Because breakthrough COVID-19 infections in fully vaccinated individuals is a reality, and so would it be wiser to require all individuals, whether they're vaccinated or not vaccinated, to take regular COVID-19 tests for students and employees? Let's start with the students first. Dr. Wright?
So at this time, we are not requiring that for vaccinated individuals because it is not a current recommendation by the CDC or any other governing body.
Dr. Barry, I'm assuming you're going to say ditto, but go ahead.
I was going to second it, but I will say ditto.
Thank you. All right, so Lauren, I'm going to turn it over to you if you can do a quick overview about what the testing protocol will look like for those employees who will be in it, in the surveillance testing.
Right, so we have worked very closely with ECU HR to use the data from the attestation information and to develop our surveillance testing groups. Individuals should be receiving notifications that are going to be in our first round of surveillance testing. We're expecting sometime next week. And so there will be more information coming out about connecting these individuals with our vendor who is providing the surveillance testing for both our off-campus students as well as our employees that are in our testing program. Once someone receives information about the registration process for the vendor, they'll have an opportunity to get registered, and then will be provided more details about the actual testing process, which will be occurring starting the week of September 27th. And then the individual will have that entire week to be able to fulfill that testing process, and will be given further instructions on how to verify or show that they completed the testing, and then we will move on to our next round of the surveillance testing group. If someone does not fulfill their testing process, then we are working with HR to determine next steps. And so I'll turn it over to Jeff to add on to that and provide any additional details with that.
Thank you, Lauren. And as Lauren said, the basis for the original roster for who is in the testing pool was based on the attestation survey that went out about a month and a half ago. Any employees that have an update or want to change their response needs to email Employee Relations at ECU.edu, and we can change their type of, whether they're vaccinated, whether they want to end the testing pool, whether they have tested positive for COVID, which could also eliminate you from the testing program. And if you get invited to a testing program or to a surveillance test and you feel like you should be exempted, please respond back to that email or to Employee Relations so that we can update your data. If you have any specific questions- If you have any specific questions, feel free to reach out to Employee Relations at ec.edu, we can answer those.
Great, thank you. And if you have questions that we can handle today, just please pop them in the chat. So here's another question. This goes back to our conversation about flu and vaccine, and the COVID vaccine. Any research on how flu and the COVID vaccine, how they interact with each other? Do they affect each other? Let's start with Dr. Barry?
I can't cite any specific research, but viral vaccines are very commonly used together. In fact, MMR, which is measles, mumps, and rubella, are three different viruses in the same vaccine. So viral vaccines are very safe to give together, and, you know, that's why, it started that the recommendation was to wait two weeks in between influenza and COVID, but the research showed that that's not necessary.
All right.
Yes, I agree with what Dr. Barry said. We've been given viral vaccines together for a long time, and so the current recommendations that we're getting is it's safe to give both together.
Thank you. All right, Leila, this is coming to you. The individual talks about being in the, in the classroom building, in between classes. The individual tries to get to class early or leave later to not have to interact with lots of people being in the hallway. Once the individual has, most people don't have their mask on in the hallways, and has asked individuals to please put their mask on, asked the student to do that, I believe. The individual threw it on the floor and kept going. The individual, employee stopped to confirm that he heard what the employee stated. The student did not comply in putting the mask on. When they don't comply in the classroom, what can this, what can the faculty member do?
Sure, well, if you ask them and they don't put on their mask, you can report it to our office on our website. There's a link to report. You can report any behavior, but there's a drop-down menu, and you can pick, I think it's COVID-19 face mask violation. And then we just need the student's name. If you have the banner number, that's great, but we can usually work off of a name, and then your contact information, so we can get, so we can follow up with you if we have questions. And then we will follow our next steps, which is to respond, depending on what we know about the student's prior conduct history related to face masks or any other COVID violation. So you can report it to our office. If they refuse to leave their classroom, I would follow the disruptive classroom policy that's outlined in the faculty manual.
Thank you, Leila. And we just posted the website for OSRR, where you can go in and actually, and send that, submit that report if you have any. I, so we have addressed the questions that were sent to the ECU contact, I'm sorry, the ECU COVID-19 email, as well as the chat. So any other questions that we, or comments that we have from the chat, well... There is another question, and we, I think we have the answer, but let me, let me put it out there. Will ECU create COVID-19 policies based on evidence backed by science or political preconceived thoughts? And I think we have, we know that, but we'll, we'll get answers from Dr. Barry and Dr. Wright. So Dr. Barry?
I was afraid you'd start with me. You know, we follow the science whenever we can. We follow the CDC recommendations. We follow the FDA recommendations. You know, like I said, this is a new virus. The recommendations have changed, and the guidance has changed along the way, and we try to be as flexible as possible and change with it. But we don't make decisions based on politics. We try to make them based on science.
Yeah. And Dr. Wright, anything you want to add?
I agree. You know, we are constantly looking at CDC guidelines and FDA guidelines consistently, DHHS guidelines, you know, really looking to make sure that we're, we're studying those. Dr. Barry is consistently sending me things, making sure that I've seen the latest updates. And so that is, that is how we try to, to make our decisions and make sure we're basing them off, off evidence-based medicine.
And one other thing, too. Within the system office, there are regular meetings that the system has with, in this case, all the directors and the Student Health Centers within the UNC system, and where the system is sharing information it knows, and the health directors can share thoughts and ideas and things that work and don't work with each other. So there's a great communication and sharing of ideas among the UNC campuses that really work. So it is, and it is factual and evidence-based. Lauren, question for you. How often do employees have to go through surveillance testing?
At this time, we are anticipating that it will be about once a month. And so we're setting up four different testing pools that we plan on rotating through one group a week. And we will change that as the semester progresses, and we kind of get a better sense of our numbers and so, but at this time, we're looking at once a month.
Thank you much. And any other questions that we have from those who are watching or comments? Lauren, looks like you want to say something?
I saw a couple of other questions come in specifically to the individuals were not quite satisfied with the answer. So I wanted to throw those back out there with eating and drinking in class. If there was a specific ECU policy on eating and drinking in class that might support our, our faculty members, which I know at this point, I don't believe that there is one specifically for the classroom, but would be interested in, in hearing others' take on that, as well as the concern about individuals that they don't have the banner ID for, aren't aware of who the individual is in the, in the hallway, and some frustration with not necessarily being able to identify students who are not in their class.
So Leila, will you take that one regarding if they don't know the names?
Yes, so in order for us to do something, we would need to know the person's name, but maybe before addressing, why don't you have your mask on or putting your mask on, ask the student their name, because they might not know why you're asking that, their name. So, you know, instead of saying, can you put your mask on, just say, I'm sorry, what's your name? Or, you know, try to get their name in some way. If they aren't in your class, obviously, you might not know who they are, and that might be difficult. And so you just do your best to try to identify who that person is by asking their name. And was there another question? Sorry, was there the eating and drinking one, is that?
Correct.
So I believe it's, you have to actively be eating and drinking, just carrying a water bottle, does, I mean, I carry one around, that doesn't mean I'm always have it in my mouth, right? So I think that that's something you should address with your class, and, you know, say you must have your mask on unless you're actively eating or drinking. If it becomes that everyone comes with food, I think that, you know, you should maybe address that the expectation is to wear a mask and, or face covering, and reiterate the reason why. But unless they're actively drinking or eating, and even drinking, you can lift your mask up from the bottom to address that. But if there's a specific issue in a specific class, I would contact our office so we can work through that. I don't know, they're adults, and so I don't think you can deprive them of drinking in your class, but if it's someone's, if it's disruptive to the class, then we can use that angle. But if you have a specific issue related to a specific class, go ahead and contact our office, and we'll talk about strategies to work through that.
Thank you, Leila. There's a question about the new, new variant. Dr. Barry, have you, or Dr. Wright, have you heard of that new variant?
Yeah, there is a new variant. It is called Mu. Fortunately, it hasn't, it hasn't spread like the Delta variant has, so we may be hearing more about it, but my crystal ball broke, and I can't predict if it's going to take off and cause another surge or not.
Thank you. All right. And then there was a question about programming, and what's the protocol for holding programs, if I'm interpreting the question correctly? So I do believe that programs outside, we're, we encourage people to have program outsides, excuse me, outside, more so than inside, because it's safer per the CDC guidelines. Those you can do without masks. We still like to encourage people to stay at least three feet apart within those programs. If there are programs indoors, they will have to be masked within the properties of ECU. Lauren, anything you want to add?
No, ma'am.
Dr. Wright?
I would just add that we encourage everyone to do a safety plan for every program that they're having indoors, and those safety plans include, you know, what are you going to do if there is an outbreak? Making sure you have everyone's names, making sure that, you know, again, that you are making sure that everyone wears a mask, that everyone's seated far enough apart. So those are the other things. I'm just making sure that if something happens, you have enough information that you can help contact tracing.
And actually, I believe if you go, when you go to reserve a space with this Central Reservations Office, and you're wanting to have a particularly, a large event, there is a safety protocol form that must be completed to make sure that, that everything that Dr. Wright just talked about is captured. All right? I am not receiving any additional questions or comments. We'll give it a couple, we'll give it another minute to see. Anything, anything people want to add that hasn't been covered, that you really want folks to know about just yet? The one thing I would say is, it's a stressful time, right? We're, we're all sitting on edge and have some anxiety about all of this, and worried about the Delta variant, and now the Mu variant that may be coming down the pike. We do know that wearing masks work, that that actually works. We know that getting back the vaccination worked. So we are stressing people to get their vaccination, we're stressing that people wear their mask, particularly indoors. Those things really do work. We know that there's some, there's a lot happening, there are a lot of balls in the air, and sometimes you may not always get, understand it all. However, when you're calling various offices to get clarification or to ask questions, to get additional information, I would really like to ask everyone, because we're all in this together. It is all hands on deck. You hear the Chancellor talk often about one ECU. That's true. And so for us to be able to make it through and survive through all of this, we all need to be doing it together and rowing, rowing in the same direction. But at the same time, we also need to be, to understand that we're all working really hard and diligent in this process. And so when you call and ask for info, please be polite and respectful of the people to whom you're speaking, and be humane, right? It's, it's, these are tough times, and people are working extremely hard, and it's a difficult situation. So I ask, we talk to our students often about civil discourse and how to engage in it, and I ask that we, as professionals, do the exact same thing with each other, in being very professional and respectful and having grace with folks, because everybody's tired, and I believe that most of us are anxious about all of this. So that is my, my ask of all of us, please, to do that. I have not seen any additional questions or comments for our panel, and so I'll give the panel one last opportunity, if anything that, anything you want to add. If so, raise your hand, and we'll let you share your last comments. All right, see you none. I thank you all for participating and answering the questions. And I think, again, all of us as, as members of Pirate Nation for all the hard work and staying vigilant in this process. Thank you for wearing your mask. Thank you for getting vaccinated. Thank you for getting tested, all of, and adhering to the protocols and the policies that ECU has established. We all, we are all in this together. Let's go Pirates, and we will be here, and we will be here healthy and safe, and continue to have a great semester. Take care of yourselves and take care of each other. Thank you, Pirates. Thank you to our panelists, and we're out.